Let somebody ask him, but we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, are you all ready Debbie?
I'm ready.
All right, is, uh, if some, I see the cameras moving, so the CMC's up there, okay. I will call this August 6th meeting of the Mounary Town Council to order, let's start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and, uh, welcome to Town Hall, for those of you who haven't been here before. Uh, we have no speakers on the schedule, but the mayor has presentations. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Let me see if this is one of my presentees. I didn't pay that? Are you sure? It's not one of my presentees.
(laughing).
(inaudible) credit card companies.
Sounds like an FCPA violation there, Tom.
How you doing there? Good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight's presentation is about making dreams come true. That happened in Mounary, was it seven years ago Denise? I meant to get you before the meeting, six? Six, we're on year six. About six years ago, I met with Denise Fox, Ben Galecki, Ben Galecki, and Dr. Chris Coleman. Uh, they said, "Mayor Pat, we have an idea, and people have been talking about it forever, we'd love to see fireworks in Mounary, and, you know, we think we can make it happen." So, they had already had their dream and their thoughts before they even came to me, but they said, "Is there anything in the way?" Is that Ben?
Yep.
Arriving on time, and making dreams come true when you arrive on time. Like I say, about six years ago, these three people came to me, Ben Galecki, Denise Fox, and Dr. Chris Coleman, they said they had an idea about bringing fireworks to Mounary. For years, and I'm sure for years, the councilmen have heard about, "Why don't we have fireworks in Mounary? Why don't we have this?" Well, you know, that takes a lot of work, that takes a lot of money, and that takes a lot of management, it takes a lot of cleanup, and there's a lot of logistics involved. Quite honestly, we just didn't have the resources and the staff, having one of the lowest ratios in the state of Maryland, to, uh, staff, to residents. We just weren't able to undertake it, but these three people said, "Pat, is there any reason why it can't happen?" And that was basically them asking the town, you know, "Is there anything preventing us from doing it?" And I said, "No, there's not." Uh, and if there's anything small we can do, you know, post it on our Facebook page or anything like that, we'd be happy to do it. So, they proceeded, and they had the inaugural Mounary Fireworks Celebration, six years ago, and I remember at that time, we were told, "You know, only bring in one vendor, it's gonna be an afternoon event, you're not gonna sell much, you're only gonna do snow cones." Well, that's moved to about, how many vendors Denise? About twenty-five, thirty vendors, and if anybody's been there, the lines are sold out forever. If anybody's been in town, there's not a parking lot in this area that is not packed. It is just fantastic. They have started something as private industry, that most governments do. I mean, other, if you go to Carroll County, if you go to other places, the governments do it. Well, here in Mounary, our citizens do it. And our citizens being our business, our businesses, and I think, Councilman, there's a list of businesses right there, before I go into... I'm gonna name these list of businesses, when you're in and around town, please remember, these are sponsors on a lesser level, these weren't the organizers, but I do wanna note them. Uh, when you go in and around town, please remember, they also help bring you the fireworks ceremony. Is there anybody here that has not been to the fireworks ceremony in Mounary? That's great. Were y'all just afraid to raise your hands? Bear Creek Dental, Mounary Collision Center, Century Ford, Fletcher's Heating and Air, Health Unlimited, Goddard School, Parr, Milis and Associates, Twin Arch Storage, Chiropractic First, M&amp;T Bank, Catonsville Homes, Green Valley Landscaping, Service Masters, Mounary Mattress, SOS Potties, it's a necessity folks, as I say. Reed and Sons, and by the way, you started out with like, a few pot, six, and now what are you up to?
Sorry, I'm at forty-two.
And I say that, you started six, now you're at forty-two, this has shown what this, how this event has grown, and it's little things, like the food vendors, supporter potties. This is the hugest event in Mounary. Uh, camp night's big Larry, but this is... Uh, Reed and Sons, digging and rigging, those are just some of the sponsors that helped contribute to this, but we're here tonight to recognize the three people that made this happen year after year. They not only managed to set this up, these same three people were there before the event, they're hanging banners, they're out there sweating, they're running around, they do all the logistics, they do all the management. The next day after the event, and I was proud to be with them for the first two years, it stopped after the third year, these same three people that you would think, well, they own the businesses, they put up the funding, they do all the management, and they tell their people what to do, that's not the case. These same three people were out there picking up trash the next day, and they probably felt it a little rough, as many of you do, the next day after Fourth of July ceremony. Uh, and this is probably, next to Christmas, or whatever your religious beliefs are, the best holiday, or the best holiday that we should be celebrating. And they bought this celebration here to Mounary, you don't have to go to Baker Park, you don't have to go to Washington DC, you can stay right here, they pack our streets, they pack our town, and this year, from what I understand, y'all did something different, for realizing that there's people all around town, and all over Doc O'Brien's property, uh, they're just, they're everywhere. Realizing that, they actually took a lot of the fireworks that were once ground displays, 'cause the people that are there, they get to see those, but the people in the periphery, which are thousands, tens of thousands, we jammed seventy, I-70. Chief, do we create some traffic problems for you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so they've actually raised the fireworks up, just for those people that can't be there at ground zero. Uh, it's just fantastic. When I first created this exemplary, mayor's award for exemplary citizen service, I thought, you know, "I'm, am I gonna give away a couple of these?" The first recipient, and the most deserving recipient, at that time, was Mary Hushour. She reserved number one, that's the reason for the coin flip, this was between you and Ben, the lady's going first. Uh, but I never thought that I would give three in a row, but there's no way that I can overlook what you all have done for this town consistently, year after year, for the past six years. First year or two, I could say it's a fluke, year six, you did it, and you did something really special. I'd like to ask you to join me up here at the podium. Denise Fox, Ben Galecki, Dr. Chris Coleman. On behalf, you go over here, please. Make sure we get these, now, these are all numbered, I only had five made, 'cause I honestly, I did not think I'd be giving away anywhere near close to this, but y'all sucked up a bunch of my coins all over the street. So, I got one more, and I got a couple of years to go. On behalf of the citizens of the town of Mounary, on behalf of the town council, who really appreciate your support, and if it wasn't for their support, this wouldn't happen, they allowed me to do what I do, when I give y'all a little bit of town support, and they also decided to step up as sponsors, and they're just one sponsor out of all these, I think one year we had to fill a gap, and it's a minor price to pay, again, other towns and other governments pay for this wholly, but we take one sponsor spot. But on behalf of the town council as well, I'd like to present you, Denise Fox, with the mayoral award for exemplary community service, you were coin number two of five. Congratulations. All right, the recent for the coin flip, it was between you two, you, you, he lost the coin flip.
Right.
Ben Galecki, on behalf of the citizens in the town council, mayoral award for exemplary community service, number three of five. Last but not least, Dr. Chris Coleman, mayoral award for exemplary community service. Before I turn over the podium, Denise Fox is with Denise Fox Realty Team, so, again, I want you all to remember these people, uh, Ben Galecki, Mounary Liquors, Dr. Chris Coleman, Mounary Eye Care, and if we could get a picture together, please remember, how you wanna do this, here?
Yeah. (inaudible).
Got it? (inaudible). Can you take it high, so my chin doesn't look?
I know.
(laughing).
Thank you.
Thank you. Turn the podium over to you guys, if you wanna say a few words.
Hey, Ben, the, the, the other big thing that we have in town is the Celtic Festival. Now, when they come, they always bring samples.
Peter's all about the food, he's all about the food. I'll be back. Just kidding, just kidding. Um, it's a, it's a real honor for us to, to do what we do, and we started this, it was just an idea, like Mayor Pat said, and it's just turned into something that we want our kids to be here, in Mounary, and have the memories that all of us probably have from the Fourth of July somewhere. We just wanted it to be here in Mounary, so, that's really why we do it. It's turned into a lot of fun, it's a lot of planning, but, but we have a good time planning, we, I think we do a good job, and we, we, we get along, and, and we have a good time, and it's, and it's for this town, we love this town, so, thank you guys, I'm glad everybody shows up and enjoys themselves, so, really.
It's, it's an incred, it's an incredible event, I remember the first year I went, you know, and you got so many more people than anybody ever expected, we just didn't have a clue, how, right, how popular July 3rd was gonna be.
Yeah.
I, I mean, people really liked July 3rd, it's like, you kinda get the fireworks done, and you can spend July 4th doing other things, uh, fantastic.
Good.
I'd love it every year, love it every year. And the fireworks this year were clearly much better, I mean, everybody commented on that, they said the fireworks were really, really nice.
And we didn't even get to use them all, so wait till next year.
Okay.
We lost some to the rain.
There is a story behind this year.
Oh, wow.
I'm gonna tell everybody that. They wanted to push it to the fifth, about two hours before they fired, because...
Oh, everybody's already out there though.
The fireworks got wet. They didn't, they didn't cover them.
See, that's the logistical problem.
Yeah, we had that fluke storm come in all of a sudden.
You want me to push this two days from now?
Yeah, everybody's already on the field, we're already settled, we've got our tents...
So, that's the phone call the town council mayor normally gets.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not gonna stop. Yeah, thank you. If I could, just real quick, Ben brought up a very valuable point I forgot to, my best view of the fireworks is, of course, the fireworks, but when you look out in the field, and see that sea of kids playing in that open field that Jimmy Litten just cut, it is just, they're creating memories in Mounary, and thank you for creating those memories. You created magic, making dreams come true, thank you.
Yeah.
And I don't think in six years, we've had anybody picked up, there's been no arrests, no, you know, it's, it's trouble for...
You've avoided it every year.
All right, up, up next, approval of the council minutes for July 2nd, and we also have the closed meeting minutes, which we're all provided, did everybody get a chance to look at the closed meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, I will movely accept both sets.
I'll second it.
Got a second from Bob, any discussion, any changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Chief Reitz with the Mounary Police Department, um, just to add on to that a little bit, with all the people that come to those fireworks this year, we were able to get them out of there in about an hour and fifteen minutes, so, I think that was...
What did we do?
We, we rolled them out of there pretty good this year.
Great job, chief, great job.
And you had Heather out there.
Heather was out there.
I'm sure it was Heather Smith, too.
I think it was all Heather Smith.
The rain that rolled through right about eleven, eleven-thirty kinda helped get them out of there a little bit quicker, too, so, yeah. Um, just to look at the, the chief's report for the month, our trainings and meetings, we attended five meetings and trainings during the month of, uh, July. Uh, one of the meetings was with the Carroll County Sheriff's Department regarding reporting protocols for the shared records management system, our National Night Out Committee had a meeting, uh, we had a meeting with the Carroll County Traffic Team, and the Carroll County Chiefs of Police met this month as well, and we also had a meeting with the Carroll County Drug Task Force Advisory Board. On the community outreach front, I'd like to start by recognizing our volunteers, Wayne Harris and Harry Johnson, they, they have been a tremendous, done a tremendous amount of work and dedication into making the department successful so far, uh, they've, they've helped a lot with planning our National Night Out, and it looks like that's on the road to being a great success for the, for us in the community. Um, I would also like to recognize our new community services administrator, office manager, Heather Smith, um, and our community services officer, Matt Betts, they both have put a lot of work also into the National Night Out, uh, campaign, and I'm very pleased with their organization of the event, and, and their performance thus far. Uh, they say that the patrol officer is the backbone of the police department, which is very true, they're basically at the forefront of everything that we deal for the department, but the civilian staff and the volunteers are the ones that really put the heart into the police department. They're the ones that keep everything running behind the scenes, don't seldom see them or recognize them, uh, they're the ones answering the phones, they're the ones communicating with the state's attorney's office, the court systems, uh, they deal with the mountain of paperwork, the officers generate on a daily basis, and they're performing the vast majority of the administrative functions that go into running a police department in their daily operations, and what they do, again, goes largely unseen, I just wanted to reach out and thank them for all their hard work. Um, then we're going into the National Night Out, this is the, uh, Mounary Police Department's inaugural National Night Out, that's scheduled for tomorrow night, at the Mounary Volunteer Fire Company Carnival Grounds, the event will start at 5:30 PM and run to 8:30 PM. Uh, there are several activities for the kids, there will be displays and exhibits from other law enforcement agencies and partners, representatives from the United States Armed Forces will be on hand, uh, we'll have a whole lot more as well, there's food, uh, will be provided by the, uh, Mounary Volunteer Fire Company, uh, children under the age of twelve get, uh, a free hot dog, chips, and a drink, and there's free snow cones as well, that will be given out to the community. Um, and to give you a little bit of background on the National Night Out campaign, um, this was also started by a volunteer, um, his name was Matt Peskin, he volunteered for the Lower Marion Community Watch Program, uh, in cooperation with the Lower Marion Police Department, near east, that's near, uh, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, um, and this goes back several years ago, Mr., he volun, he was the founder and the executor, executive director of the National, National Association of Town Watch, uh, National Night Out was first presented in nineteen eighty-four, and its beginnings, it was rooted in an already established network of law enforcement agencies, neighborhood watch groups, civic groups, uh, crime prevention associations, uh, volunteers across the nation, and the first National Night Out involved around two and a half million people, that spanned across about four hundred communities in twenty-three states. It started out as basically a front porch vigil, vigil, we would turn our front porch lights on, recognition for law enforcement and so forth, and it's grown to encompass block parties, uh, festivals, parades, cookouts, and other community-style events, uh, and on August 7th, the town of Mounary, along with their own police department, will take their side with other community partners, and join now over the thirty-eight million people in over sixteen thousand communities across the country in celebrating National Night Out, so, that's our beginnings with National Night Out, so. We have a chaplain program, uh, Harry Johnson, who is a member of the International Conference of Police Chaplains, and also serves with, uh, the Frederick County Sheriff's Office and the Frederick City Police as well, has been riding with MAPD officers, getting to know them, so you might see him out in the community with our police officers, and he's getting to know the citizens of town and so forth, and I think Harry's also a resident of town here for several years, he's been around a good while, and he's spreading the word about the chaplain program with the MAPD. Our community services unit, uh, we have a community service unit that can now provide community, uh, provide our community with residential and commercial security surveys, so if any business or any citizen wants to have their house or business looked at, uh, we have our volunteers and, and our CSO trained and certified by the Maryland Community of Crime Prevention Institute, to come out and do surveys for your business and your, and your home, so, if you would like to have that done, please contact our police department, we can make that happen for you. Monthly overdose summary, we did have one overdose this month that was opioid-related in the Hundred Block of Ridge Court, our EMS personnel did administer naloxone in that case, uh, so we're still down, you know, it was the first overdose we've had in, in several months, in two months, so, um, prefer none, but we did have one, so. Uh, monthly performance, we handled nine hundred and eighteen events for the month of July, uh, we're averaging about, like, one thousand and one events a month, that's our average right now. Traffic summaries, we, we had one hundred and thirty-nine traffic stops for the month, we issued fifty-four citations, um, we issued one hundred and twenty-one warnings, and we issued twenty-three safety equipment repair orders, uh, there was no, no DUI arrests this month, and we had four traffic arrests. On a criminal enforcement front, we had eleven total criminal apprehensions, and we had three simple citations that were issued. Uh, we took fifty-one total investigatory reports, uh, we had, out of that, we had five Part One offenses and seven Part Two offenses, um, and significant events for the month. We did have one, one arrest where we made, uh, of a person that we encountered at the Carnival Grounds during the Carnival, uh, we, the set, the next night, we got a call for a fight and progress at the Walmart, and then we found out it was the same person that was involved in that, and upon interviewing him, he gave us a different name and date of birth that was given to us the night before, so we knew something was up, so, we, he was arrested for, you know, related charges there at the Walmart, and then we took him to the central booking facility, and through fingerprinting, we found out, he did give us a, a, a false name and date of birth, and that he was wanted in Florida for burglaries and, and assaulting police and fire department personnel, so, that was made the main event for the month, it's just, that kinda tells you some of the things, some of the challenges we have in Mounary, being right off an interstate highway, you know, we have a lot of transient crime and so forth coming into town, and, and that's, you know, so that's just something that kinda adds to, to bring that to, to light for...
You mentioned One Hundred Ridge Court, is that down by McDonald's? I'm trying to remember where that...
I believe that was the Hys.
But it's, it's in that little court, it's that little court there with McDonald's, with McDonald's and Hys, and...
Right.
Okay, I thought that was that little, that little street there, which is, once again, right off the seventies, and easy to go off.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions, or...
Actually, I, um, one thing, you know, when we were waiting out the rain at the carnival, we had several discussions, and the one that I think would really do well being shared with the whole council and everybody else, is I was very impressed with, uh, the benefits you told me of having our own dog, having Stryker down here, those issues never occurred to me, um, you know, about the speed and everything else, if you can maybe just give everybody a quick briefing on that like you gave me, that just showed me how important having our own dog was.
Yes, we, we've had a couple cases now where we've made a, a significant impact on some things that have happened around town, we had one case where, where, uh, the dog was utilized on a traffic stop, and we seized like, forty-four caplets of heroin, um, and that's, that's having some impact, a lot of impact, oh, we had another case where we seized like, twenty-two caplets of heroin, so it's all around, it's around us, and it's, we've been, it's really impacted the law enforcement community too, because we have troopers out on seventy calling us to come out and do quick scans of the cars for them, and that's something that we've never had in the southern part of the county before, because most of the time, these resources stay up around Westminster, Central in the county, and some of the issues with, with using canines is getting the dog to the scene in a timely manner to be able to use them, because you didn't start running into issues of, you know, detention issues, holding them too long to have this, have this done, and now this resource is immediately available to our guys, and we can utilize it, and it's making an impact, we're able to scan the cars and make the drug arrests, so, uh, he's made quite a few arrests in the county, and I know the, the law enforcement agencies that work with us, they're very appreciative of having that resource down here, uh, to help, because it, you know, one of the arrests that we had, we recovered all those caplets of heroin, that person lived in town, so that stuff's coming here, and it's probably being dealt in our neighborhoods and on our streets and so forth.
And that's an arrest you could not have made without the dog, 'cause you wouldn't have gotten hit on the car.
Right, right, yes, uh, I mean, there was reasonable suspicion there to say, yes, there, there's reason to call a dog down and do the drug scan, and then once that drug dog gets there and scans it, then you, your reasonable suspicion is elevated to probable cause, and that's when you search the vehicle and they find the drugs, so, yeah, it's, there's, and without that dog, we would've never got, been able to get into that car, you know, for that reason, so, that's, that's some of the advantages of having a narcotics...
Will Stryker be there tomorrow night?
Stryker will be there tomorrow night, and we have a canine demonstration planned, and some of that demonstration will show how the dog operates and searches, how he recovers narcotics, what, what, what the handler's looking for, and he'll also have a patrol dog demonstration, since Stryker is cross-trained, so it'll be pretty eventful.
Cool. Are they having, they still having the helicopter flying, is that still scheduled, or...
We do have a private helicopter fly, flying in from, uh, one of the companies that do medical transports, so, as long as the weather holds off, everything looks good for that as well.
Good.
Chief, along those lines, and very good point, are you tracking how much assist we give to Frederick and Carroll County, and the reason I bring that up, I think it's fantastic, 'cause these people on our borders, and I'd love for the word to get out that Mounary is not a safe haven for drug dealers, or those that are willing to do bad things, but when we go, when it comes time to talk about tax equity with these other counties and resources that we're providing, so we do get a rebate for our own police force, I'd also like to bring that up, that we're providing an additional service.
In the chief's report, there is a monthly report that tracks that, and you can look at that and see which agencies to call, and we help out.
That's good, so we may wanna extract that when we're talking about, uh, tax equity, to get some of that money back, but it's fantastic, 'cause you're right, that person lived here, or they're in and around here. Thank you.
Thanks, chief, any other questions?
Yeah, I couldn't help but notice that you omitted one thing on National Night Out, and that's the dunk tank.
Oh, yes.
Very good observation, Councilman Larry.
As a public service announcement to those who've received a citation recently, and you didn't wanna go to court, you can go to National Night Out and execute some justice.
And everybody's favorite, Officer Brooks will be in that dunk tank, so...
You'll be, you're on at six, I believe, is that correct?
Get him a little wet.
You're on at six, I believe, correct?
I start at six, I'm there for a half hour, and then I believe it's, uh, Officer Brooks, and then Officer Ginevra will be in there as well, and I'm trying to talk to Lieutenant in the beginning there, too, but he, he said his Speedos don't fit like they used to.
That may keep people away.
I can assure you, the dunk tank is a lot of fun, having done it many times.
Any comments there, Lieutenant?
You can, you can yell obnoxious things at people that you would not get away with otherwise, and so it can be a lot of fun, but, uh, looking forward to it, and it's my understanding that if you don't know how to throw a ball, you can pay just a flat rate and come up and push the button to dunk you.
Absolutely, and all the, all the money that this generates goes to Mounary Net as well, so, that's...
So, you don't have to buy the balls, you could just pay this higher flat rate if you can't throw a ball, and just go push the button, so, sounds, looking forward to it.
Thank you, chief.
Good save, Councilman Larry.
Up, up next, we've got the, uh, Volunteer Fire Company report, Bruce?
Good evening, for, uh, the past month of July, it was kind of a busy month, uh, rescue calls, we had a hundred and twelve in Carroll, forty-six in Frederick, three in Howard, two in Montgomery, for a total of a hundred and sixty-three calls. Fires, we had fifteen in Carroll, eleven in Frederick, and six in Howard, for thirty-two, which resulted in a hundred and twenty-seven calls for service in Carroll, fifty-seven in Frederick, nine in Howard, two in Montgomery, for a hundred and ninety-five calls, uh, for the month. I'd like to thank everyone who came out to our two-day carnival, our two-dry-day carnival.
I ate a lot more fried Oreos than two days' worth, so I know you were open more nights than that.
But we did have some, some activity on Monday and Tuesday, some people braved the elements that come out, we appreciate that, it was, uh, it wasn't a total loss, but it wasn't what we would hope for, but that's the weather, and that's the way it goes, so we'll hopefully have better weather in the future. Uh, August nineteenth will be the, um, chicken barbecue, it won't be the second Sunday this month, it'll be the third Sunday this month, and then it'll switch back in September to the, uh, second, uh, Sunday as scheduled, and also in September, you can plan ahead on the third, uh, Sunday in September, and every third Sunday thereafter through till May, we'll be starting our Big Country Breakfast back up, so, uh, a lot of activities coming up there, and starting back up in the fall, and as the chief reported, we will be having the food concession at the, uh, Night Out tomorrow night, and also have apparatus on display and things of that nature, uh, as well, uh, and we're happy to, uh, assist with that, uh, act, community activity. Uh, while I'm here, if I may, and I just lost what I wanted to pull up, there it is, uh, if I can put on my Board of Election Supervisor's hat, um, and remind everybody that, uh, we will have a special election coming up, and that will be, um, on Monday, September tenth, uh, from seven AM to eight PM at the Mounary Volunteer Fire Company Reception Hall at one thousand eight Twin Arch Road. Absentee ballots will be available at Town Hall as of August seventeenth, if you're planning to be out of town on Election Day, and the last day to register to vote in this special election is August thirteenth, uh, at five PM. If you currently live in Mounary Town Limits, and are a registered voter with Frederick or Carroll County Election Board, you're automatically registered to vote in the town election. County election, uh, registration forms are available at the library and Town Hall, and I also heard today that we lost one of the people that was going to be a poll worker for us, so we do have an opening for a poll worker, and I remind anyone that is interested that unfortunately you have to be there from... with Frederick or Carroll County Election Board, you're automatically registered to vote in the town election. County election registration forms are available at the library and Town Hall. And I also heard today that we lost one of the people that was going to be a poll worker for us. So we do have an opening for a poll worker. And I remind anyone that is interested that unfortunately you have to be there from six in the morning till we close, uh, the, uh, elections and get things squared away after that. But we do pay the minimum wage for that. So, uh, if you're interested, uh, contact Town Hall.
You have to be a resident.
And what?
A resident.
And you have to be a resident of the town. So we do need one more poll worker. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate it. All right. Let's move on to community concerns, citizen comments. This is a time slot we set aside. When anybody wants to address anything that they want to bring before the council, this is your chance. I would just ask that maybe you just kind of line up on the wall over here and we'll take you one at a time. Scott, identify yourself for the record, please.
Uh, Dr. Scott Cerchio. I live at sixteen oh seven Pullman Court here in Mount Airy. And, um, I just wanted to say, uh, Mayor Rockenberg, you really set up the Fourth of July event well. That was a fantastic event. One of the things we left out though was to thank the folks who got the award for the raising of the American flag prior to that. Sunday, the, on the first, there was the, a fantastic event that was really, um, I guess underrepresented, but it was really worth going. So if you, uh, next year, it's going to happen again, you should go, because it was really nice. The flag came right out of the, uh, the flatbed that brought it. And it went up and it was huge. And the sun was behind it. It was really good. So I highly recommend it. And it's worth your time. And that was, um, this year was Sunday morning. And it was, I think it was-
Yeah, it's actually, people have just felt so passionately about that flag and how they just drive by and see it, that they decided this year, and thank you for bringing that up, to make it an actual special event.
Right.
So thank you for highlighting that and for highlighting my error.
No, not an error, just a-
I suggest you never do that publicly again.
It was, it was worth it. So I figured I would mention it. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that the, um, in, at Lingonore Wine Cellars on August twenty-first, there's going to be a kickoff for the American Cancer Society Making Strides Against Cancer Event. And last year, we had representatives right here, um, on our council on, uh, Mayor Rockenberg and Tom McCarron were members of the all-male breast cancer awareness team. I was on the team myself. We did a great job. We raised lots of money and it was fantastic experience. It all culminated in the end on, uh, Octo, in October, the Walk for Breast Cancer. And it was thousands of people. I, I had no idea this was happening every year in Mount Airy, but it's worth going to, even if you're not on our team. But I'm calling out on, on August twenty-first for any males that want to join our team and represent Mount Airy. We were the only all-male team of central Maryland. And we got a lot of good attention for that. So, uh, you know, if you want to do it, show up Lingonore Wine Cellars on August twenty-first. Um, it's, it's worth it. And if you need details, this is the time. It was right after dinner, but, uh, I don't know exactly when it starts, but-
Five thirty.
I said five thirty. Good, because I'm emceeing.
Five thirty. All right. So, and the other thing I wanted to say was that I am running for the special election, uh, town council seat that, uh, Scott Strong left open. And so you'll see me around. I'm going to donate the sign to the Mount Airy Historical Society because it is a special event. But that being said, if I, um, I want to hear voices and I want to talk to the people. So if I come knocking on your door, I'm not a creepy stranger. I just want to hear what you have to say. And I want to, uh, get to know you. And I want to represent you. If you wouldn't vote for me, uh, maybe we can do good things. Okay? Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Step on up.
Okay, so just realized it's easier to do-
Just identify, just identify yourself for the record and where you live and-
Absolutely.
Get going.
I was gonna say, I just realized it's easier to do an investment discussion in front of an auditorium full of people than it is to stand here right now. Um, my name is David Frick. I live on eleven oh three Leafy Hollow Circle across from Mount Airy, uh, Twin Ridge Elementary. Um, I'm a twenty-three-year resident of Mount Airy. So I've been fortunate enough to be part of the town as an import for quite a while. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is to bring up an issue, um, that I think affects more than just the initial group. So on Leafy Hollow Circle between Deer Hollow and Park Bridge, there are nine houses. I had a chance to talk to six of the families on that street. But I'm not here about myself and the other five families. I'm here and I want to identify stakeholders. So it's those nine families. It's the kids that go to Twin, uh, Twin Ridge Elementary. It's the people that walk their dogs at night. It's the people who come in for sporting events. It's the other residents who bring their kids up just to walk around the playground. Okay? So we're not talking about nine families. We're talking about several hundred affected individuals. What are they affected by? They are affected by regular speeding between Deer Hollow and Park Bridge. Okay, regular speeding. Regular speeding by residents. And this regular speeding is creating not only a risk to the people who live on the street, who are out, who are walking around, who are playing ball, but also the same people are not only a risk because of the speed, but because of the noise that's being generated by the speed. So let me give you a couple of stats. I'm not, I didn't do a presentation, but I did do some research. So Carroll County and Frederick County both have noise ordinances. They look almost exactly the same. I printed them out, took a look at them. In the noise ordinance, it says between ten and seven each day, your maximum decibels are sixty-five decibels. Between seven and ten, it's fifty-five decibels. Okay? So we have metrics or we have parameters. Okay, so what happens when you take a diesel truck? And keep in mind, the point I'm referring to are eight-cylinder vehicles, right? I'm not talking about four and six cylinders. I'm not talking about most of what you're going to see on the ground in public, man. Diesel trucks, diesels that are loud to begin with. And when you put a three-inch exhaust on them, they get even louder. So how loud do they get? Go online, do a little research. Average DB decibel limit on a diesel eight-cylinder truck, three-inch or larger exhaust, eighty-four decibels. Go online and look to see when hearing damage begins. Eighty-five decibels. Fifteen minutes of exposure to eighty-five decibels. Okay? Permanent hearing loss or some help. So what happens when you have people who are sitting out with their kids and vehicles roaring up and down the street? And that vehicle comes up for, up the Mount Airy Speedway, as some of us call it, right? They come into Leafy Hollow, punch the accelerator, run up, not an eighth of a mile, not a quarter, a little less than an eighth. That child or that person over at the school gets exposed to eighty-four decibels. Do they have any hearing damage? Probably this much, which is more than they should have. Because if we enforce our speed limits, the noise issue goes away. Okay, so law enforcement, I talked to Officer Brooks, I talked to Officer Sir Rowling. And they were actually out, as a most recent example, on July thirty-first, doing exactly what they should. Sitting on the street, looking for someone speeding. And they didn't have one. The reason I know is because I sat out on the driveway and watched at the beginning of it. Same time, August first, same time window, boom, truck came up like it was being chased by Satan himself. They weren't there. Okay? Because they took a guess. And they guessed wrong, but they made the effort. Okay? So what are we talking about? Are we talking about, um, radar, lasers, speed enforcement? Okay? I think that's a really short-term solution. Okay? Long-term solutions, speed bumps? Absolutely not. Put a speed bump in that street, you have one of the trucks go up, offer exhaust, remember, and lift it. The speed bump's not going to do anything. Sorry. Except what it will do is it'll increase the noise level, because you have the eighty-four DBs and you have the bed going like this. Okay? What do you need? You need what our friends at Deer Park Elementary, I think it's Deer Park in Montgomery County did. Traffic cameras. What our friends in Damascus did, by the old Damascus Chevrolet, portable speed camera. Going into Damascus, okay? Three speed cameras, boom, boom, boom. Okay? Portable camera, a little bit further down. What do speed cameras do? They tell people that they speed in that area, guess what? They're going to get a citation. Okay? Then Chief Wright and his force, they don't have to be sitting on our street, hopefully catching somebody who's speeding. And again, this is not about Dave Frick. Okay? This is about the kids that go to that school. This is about the people that bring their families up to go and play on the playground. It's about the people that are walking their dogs. Okay? Because what's going to happen when one of those people who's speeding, okay? Now, you're running the risk of noise impact. What happens, God forbid, if one of them's texting? And don't think that doesn't happen. What happens when they go off the street, off that curb, and they run up right where the kids are playing ball? Remember, we're talking about one child gets injured. That's one child too many, because it doesn't have to happen. You don't have to speed. And the thing is, the reason I can tell you these are residents is because it's the same vehicles over and over. And if I wanted to tell you who they are, I could tell you. I could describe them. Not my job. So I'm here tonight to get the issue in the minutes to the town council, raise it for the citizens of Mount Airy. Okay? And, and to let you know, okay, that I went door to door on my time. One of my neighbors is here. Okay? Same issue. So it's not Dave Frick wanting to be on TV or getting in front of everyone. It's because it's an issue that needs to be taken care of. And we can do it. And we don't need to put our kids at risk. I'm totally unnecessary. And that, folks, is all I have to say. And if you do ever want to talk pension investments, be happy to. And, and Deidre, I don't know if you want to add anything, since this is my minute.
No, I've pretty much said it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, Roxanne Hemphill, six oh five Park Avenue. Um, I just want to bring to the council's attention, um, I have two holes in my yard, um, that were, that were dug by Baltimore Gas and Electric. I did not receive anything from Baltimore Gas and Electric that they were going to do this. My neighbor, after the fact, got, did receive her letter. I think it was August first and they had been working a couple of weeks then. Um, I know this isn't your responsibility. It was the responsibility of BG&E. Uh, but I do think that some follow-up should have happened to make sure that, um, us, uh, the residents that were going to be affected would have known. I don't have a problem with it. I knew it was coming. But some people did and actually refused to allow them on their yard for a while. Um, the other thing is, I don't, um, as far as the fireworks are concerned, the one thing that people don't hear, because I live where I live, six oh five Park Avenue, when I'm sitting on my front porch watching the fireworks at the end, after it's over, you hear how many ever, thousands of people, it is, down there clapping and screaming and hollering. It's really neat to hear that from far off. It's awesome. Um, we did encounter one thing this year that hadn't happened before. They parked on Park Avenue on both sides, so that when people were trying to get out, they, it was one lane. And those cars stayed there for quite a while. I know you got a huge logistic problem. If I'd been out there when they parked, I'd have shoot them off. But I wasn't there. I was in the, my backyard. But they parked in front of my house. So, and then left the car.
Yeah, I've never actually looked at it. Is there, is there no parking on Park Avenue?
There are no parking signs, but there's just no parking, no.
Okay, I was gonna say, I never noticed. So I-
No, there's no parking.
There's no, there are not any, no parking signs, is that?
No, there are no parking signs. But that's like a, you know, a main thoroughfare to get. So I, why would we have the parking signs there? I don't know if you can put them up, you know, just for that night or-
That might be something for streets and roads still, like putting up no parking signs.
That night, you know, whatever. But, um, it was interesting, because some of them stayed there for quite a while. So there was one line of traffic.
I usually don't comment during citizen comments.
Go ahead.
Do they stay there beyond the event?
Oh, yeah. They would-
Did they stay?
Oh, no. Oh, no, 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 no. No. But it took them a while to get there. And the people that were using Park Avenue, instead of having two lanes of traffic, we only had one.
It, it made it harder to get out.
I'm going to sit with you after the meeting.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
I'll take that one.
Hi, Pamela Reed, um, seventeen fourteen Tressel Street. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of MAMSA. Um, at the July membership meeting, um, MAMSA underwent a leadership change through a fair election process. Um, Kelly Patrick is now secretary, Dick Swanson is treasurer, uh, Wayne Evans is vice president, and myself is now, I'm the new president. Um, we'd like to thank Ellie Bondi for her service and dedication to MAMSA. Um, it's my understanding that she's been an active member since its inception. Um, and she will actually continue on as the chair of promotions. Um, so we're excited to, to keep Ellie. Um, I look forward to working with Dick, Wayne, and Kelly to create a unified Main Street, um, where most, if not all merchants, will be a part of the process in creating, um, social, social gathering, economic growth, um, and benefit our, our downtown business district. Um, our next meeting is August twentieth here at Town Hall. Six o'clock is the promotions meeting. Seven o'clock is the regular member meeting, seven o'clock. Um, and we actually invite everyone to come, whether you're a member or a non-member. Um, upcoming events is History one oh one, the week of September seventeenth. Um, every evening at seven PM, there is a speaker somewhere in Mount Airy, um, talking about history. Ellie actually put this together and she's very proud of it and very excited for it. Um, and then of course, Oktoberfest, September twenty-ninth in downtown Mount Airy, um, Saturday, September twenty-ninth, from eleven to five. And that's it.
One question.
Congratulations, Pam.
Yeah, thanks.
Nice job.
Are you sure?
MAMSA stands for?
Mount Airy Main Street-
Excuse me, can we quieten the audience, please? We can't hear over the podium.
Uh, Mount Airy Main Street Association. Um, so we are a representation of-
Bless you.
Merchants and members of downtown Main Street.
Thanks, Pam. Appreciate it.
And, uh, citizens can join. We'll give a round of applause.
Yeah.
And, uh, citizens can join for what, fifteen bucks?
Um, I believe so. Individual memberships, yes. So part of, moving forward, we are looking to increase membership through individuals and merchants. Um, it's a main focus right now, so.
Do you still get two wine glasses at, say, Mount Airy Main Street?
Pat, I'll give you four.
I've already signed up. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. All right, up next, ordinances resolutions. We've got an eighteen-nine budget amendment to allocate funds for a special election for the town due to the resignation of Scott Strong. That is here for adoption. I will move, we adopt. Do I have a second? Got a second from Bob. Any discussion on this one? It's kind of like, we gotta do it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Up next, resolution two thousand eighteen-eight, allow alcohol in the park, uh, for the Rockin Recovery on eight twenty-five eighteen. And I think this is just our standard, um, resolution on this. Um, I will move it. Have a second?
I'll second.
That's right. All right. Larry, any discussion on this one?
Um, my only question is, uh, we're in Watkins Park. It just very generally blatantly says Watkins Park, but I would rather it not be all of Watkins Park.
Absolutely. I think Tom put boundaries.
Well, typically, the application for these events typically will define where they're going to be. But if we want to be that specific in the resolution, certainly that'd be-
Yeah, I, I would definitely agree with Councilman, uh, Jason and say that it should be. And I would say limited to the pavilion that is reserved or within ten feet of that pavilion. Uh, we just quarter off just to make sure, because you're right. You don't want to open up the entire-
I mean, when we get it, we don't really see those things. And so-
No, absolutely. No, that was-
I just want a clarification on that.
No, it should, uh, I would suggest that the council update to say the pavilion or within ten feet of the pavilion.
I'm seeing a hand. Pat, come on up. I'm, I'm going to guess you're going to tell us something about the event we don't know.
Probably something Pat doesn't know. Um, I wouldn't limit it to just ten feet of the pavilion. You potentially have, um, I believe that the community is going to come to this event to support your recovery. Um, I, I would say the pavilion area, kind of the playground area, that's general area.
I was thinking the same thing, because there's another little gazebo up there that somebody might go in. Somebody might go to the playground. They might go to the bathroom.
Right.
Um, all of which makes sense.
Right. And, and if we need be, if you feel more comfortable, we can rope it off with some caution tape.
I, I would feel more comfortable with, with limits. And, uh, it's, thank you for the recovery part. It's also, it's about a thank you to a community that really came out and support, supported me personally like I've never seen. It's also about hope for other people that are struggling with cancers and other diseases. So that's what this celebration or event is about.
I just think the turnout is going to be-
Yeah, turnout may be more than you expect.
I, I think it ought to be limited. And I think there ought to be some signs, no alcohol beyond this point. And, uh, I'm happy with beer and wine as well. I'm not really happy with anything else. So-
I would feel comfortable with that if we just set some, some of the signs or some cones or something like that.
I, I would definitely agree with that.
All right. Thank you.
So do we want to do an amendment to this? Or do we just want to leave it up to them to post it properly?
I would feel more comfortable amending it.
Okay.
And then that way, we don't have to worry about, we didn't do our part.
Okay.
I agree.
What, what would you- Okay, I, what, what would you, maybe 200 feet of the pavilion? That should take in, I'm thinking, the bathrooms and the little gazebo and the, and the play, and the play lot.
If the main section is the pavilion, then you're getting the playground probably, because some people are probably bringing some kids and so forth, the, the restrooms.
And, and the gazebo, and the other gazebo which is up there, which people might use, then that should take all that in.
200 feet?
200 feet.
Of the?
Of the pavilion. Where are we gonna, let's see, I'm looking at here, so where we're gonna amend this? Okay, Tom says up right under where it says Watkins Park, change it to read Watkins Park Pavilion and within 200 feet thereof. That's how it will be amended to read.
Okay.
And I will amend my motion to include that amendment. Larry, are you still picking up the second?
Still second.
Any more discussion?
I do have a, is this something that you're advertising? I don't, I don't know a lot about this event.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put out a post, it, it's public, so I'm gonna ask some faith leaders in the community to show up and speak. And it's really, it's, yes.
Fair enough.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Say up next. Resolution 2018-9 to allow BYOB for Celebrate Mount Airy on 8/25/18 in the downtown. Now, that's actually, this one actually does specifically state Prospect Hill, which is the closed street zone on Main Street, so. I will so move this, and you've got a second from Bob, any more discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous. All right, up next, we have the zoning map amendment for, well, actually, we have to get to this, we, I, I think we have our petitioner here, so I'm not sure.
Everybody's looking at Aaron.
How we should handle this, are, are you the petitioner on 40, petitioner on 4040?
Yes.
Okay, we held our hearing at 7:15, it was scheduled for 7:00. We held it at 7:15, and we dismissed the petition because there was nobody here to argue the case. Okay, well, let's, I, I just need, that's just procedurally, I, should, do you want to, should we, do we have the ability to reopen this, or do we have to reschedule it because of the timing issue?
I mean, you know, I think that one person did show at the time designated.
And he's still here.
Yeah, nobody's left the audience.
I would think you could get away with doing it after this, this meeting, if you wanted to do that tonight.
I'm wondering, should we insert it here?
We have a very short agenda.
Or should we wait? I mean, I guess my, my issue is, I don't, I want to do my best to not make this gentleman wait because he was here at time, wait. So I could do, do it at this point? And then we can take the, okay. I'm going to, at this point, move that we undismissed the petition.
Should we suspend our town council meeting first? I don't know.
Yeah.
Aaron, you got like half hour to hang out?
Well, I'm more worried about this. Okay, all right, well, then, we still have to come back to our council meeting because we've got the actual resolution on the agenda, so I have to come back to that. All right, up next would be the annexation resolution for Dorsey Town. Resolution 2018-42.
This is just to set a public hearing, which has to be more than 60 days out because under the town-county agreement, we have to give Carroll County 60 days' notice comment period. So basically, you need to set a, a public hearing, and then in addition, what happens at this point is, is that there is an annexation plan, I believe you have the draft in your packet, I believe, and you would approve the annexation plan, which is, you're not approving the annexation, you're just approving what goes out to the public agencies, the Maryland Department of Planning, Carroll County, actually, this might be Frederick County, is it Frederick? Whichever county, their planning department.
It's Carroll. It's Carroll. I'm, I'm thinking exactly where it is going, yeah, that's Carroll.
Sorry. So basically, you're approving what goes to them for comment, and then you're gonna wait for comment to come back, and then those are back by the time you hold the hearing.
So, tonight, all we have to do is set a date more than six, more than 60 days out, and then everything else will happen.
And then number two, vote to approve the annexation plan that goes out for public comment.
Okay, that's not an approval of the annexation itself.
No, it is not, but to be very clear, it's just you're approving the document.
We're just approving what they send to everybody to let everybody know to come in and complain or not complain, that's correct.
That does have to be done tonight?
Well, you can do it next time, but then just put your hearing out enough to make sure that you're giving Carroll County 60 days.
We, we have to, we have to, our, our hearing date has to be 60 days after we approve.
That's our plan.
Just the plan, not, we're not agreeing to the plan. We're just approving that that's what we're gonna mail to everybody.
It used to be called an outline of services under the statute, the Maryland code, which would outline really the, the, what the develop, or the proposed annexation made demand by way of town services and whether or not our services are adequate. So that gives the planning departments of state and county some educated way to comment and provide those comments back to the town.
Okay, all right. My, my question is, who, who generates this Dorsey Town annexation plan? Because I see town of Mount Airy on it, is that something we generate?
Yes.
We do?
We do.
Not the petitioner or county?
Yeah, which surprised me.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The, it's a, I will say it's an odd statute, what the statute says is that you have, of course, a petition, then a resolution, then it goes to the Planning Commission for comment, then it comes back, and in addition to setting your public hearing, what the statute says is that the legislative body shall approve an annexation plan that shall be sent out for comment to be, in, you know, with sufficient time for county and state planning agencies to be, to comment. In fact, the statute goes on to say that state and county planning agencies have the first right to make a statement at the public hearing, so it's, it's.
So anybody who applies for an annexation, we have to come up with the annexation plan? And we have to accept that at the council table so it can be sent out?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and they, they pay for it, correct?
Yeah, so I was gonna, they pay for the cost.
They, they pay for all the costs of that. It's just that our, our planning people have to put it together because, you know, they make sure it's at least correct.
It makes sense. We want it to be at arms length, yeah.
I want to understand, I want to make sure everybody understands.
Right.
There's a, I think a $5,000 deposit that's made with the application for annexation,
that's a deposit toward those kind of expenses, and if the expenses go beyond that, I don't know if they will, but if, if they do, then it's up to the petitioner to pay that as a condition typically of an approved annexation. And to pay it even if the annexation is not approved.
That was my next question, if it's not approved, they still have to pay.
I think we're gonna get a lot of people at this. Roxanne, you're planning, so.
Yes, that's why I want to talk.
Yeah, so you can, you can weigh in on this.
I just want to make sure you understand, the Planning Commission did come back with an unfavorable recommendation for this annexation.
Yes.
I just want you to make sure that.
We, we got that, Roxanne, thanks.
Hold on, can we still have the regular question answered? Were there people at the Planning Commission that showed up at this? Do we expect a lot of people to?
Yeah, that, that is a good question. Did you have a lot of people? Because we, we need to determine how much time we may need to set for our hearing.
We had, yeah, the people were at the May meeting. There weren't that many at the meeting last time. But there were a significant amount of people at the May meeting.
So what kind of time?
Because we talked about this for two, two meetings.
Two months, okay. What kind of timeframe, Monica or anybody, do you think we need for, how long we need to set aside for a public hearing? I mean, and a lot of times we set these public hearings and nobody shows up.
Yeah, I would, I would do 60 days, man.
No, I mean, time, like, is it like seven or 6:30 or 6:45?
Oh, for, for the hearing time?
Yeah.
So I would give it 35 minutes.
Yes.
So, okay, so start at six, we'll start at 6:45. How about 6:45 November 5th? Because our, our October meeting would not be 60 days out. The next, to get 60 days out, we go to our November 5th meeting. Does that sound, so, I guess two issues we'll do is we'll vote on November 5th at 6:45, and that this be what is gonna go forward, for, to, to either get approved or disapproved by us.
And I would make that motion, Peter.
Okay, Bob will make that motion, I will second that. Any discussion on dates or times there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. And, and Larry was correct, just, Debbie?
Excuse me, did this motion also accept the plan?
Yes, yes, I made, we're accepting.
It accepts the plan and the November 6 day.
That this is the plan that we're sending out to everybody. It's not, for those who are confused, it's not an acceptance that this is the plan we're voting to approve. All we're saying is this is the plan that town staff can mail out to everybody, so when they show up at the meeting, that's the one we'll be voting on. Okay, we'll vote on, we'll vote on the plan at the November, the November meeting.
This just allows the door to be opened.
This allows us to get started. We have to have a plan before us before we can.
Right, we can change it.
Before we can, before we can, before we can up it or down it or change it, we have to have it. All right. We have no unfinished business. Let's roll on to new business, final, uh, final release and bonding. Twin Arch Self Storage Lot 7. Developers requested 10%, which is the remaining bonding. Town staff recommends we release $31,507.80, which is the remaining 10% of the original bond. I will move we release as recommended. Bob's seconding, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Up next, we've got the PWA. Okay. Gotcha, okay. We have the PWA, which was at the table, here we go. PWA for Twin Arch Business Park, Section 2, Lot 6A. Tom, this is just our standard PWA form?
It is, the only change I've been informed that should be made to it is we should take out the water expansion fund charge because that has already been charged and paid, as I understand it, for Lot 6A. This PWA, as I understand it, relates to the back lot, and that's why, for instance, you don't see water and sewer in there. This is just for landscaping and one other.
Stormwater.
Water management. So what I would recommend is that, other than, basically, the, the only change should be that the charge for the water expansion fund should be $0.
And, and for those that don't understand, PWA is a public works agreement, it's where the town holds money in escrow, I guess, to make sure that you finish the streets and the roads and the sidewalks and the plantings and all that kind of stuff.
Let me find the exact paragraph.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking for it myself. I see stormwater management, yeah.
I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, yeah, basically, we, we, we have money that's held or that's under a bond to make sure that they actually finish building the project, they put in all the landscaping and all the other stuff they're supposed to do, so they don't get started and then walk away, and the town gets stuck finishing the roads.
The one before this, where they got their money back, so they're done.
Yeah, so that's page eight, paragraph eight, instead of the number $5,222.25, the number should be $0.
Should we just strike paragraph eight completely?
Or you can strike paragraph eight also.
Okay, I will move we accept the PWA, striking paragraph eight and renumbering all the ones after that to.
Or you could just put NA, just, just leave paragraph eight the.
Okay, we'll leave paragraph eight, and we'll just put not, not applicable there. That would be my motion, I guess, Deb's second from Bob? Any discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up, we, we have a community planning administrator hire. We have a recommendation from the mayor and from staff. I think we've all seen the, the resume. I will, I will go ahead and move that we make the hire, that we approve the hire, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
I will second, any discussion on this one? If there is, then we may want to go into a closed meeting, but I'm good. You're good, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. And on the.
It was your recommendation that took most of us over, Pat.
Yeah, actually, I will say, I, for me, I, it came to me, and I was like, it is kind of a mayor's prerogative kind of thing, so I kind of was looked at and said, there's no red flags there. Whenever that comes to me, I, I defer to what the mayor's doing since that's his project.
There were some good issues raised by the council that need to be clarified. I appreciate y'all's input, and I, hopefully, we addressed those issues.
Yes, you did.
I was, I was, I was, I was satisfied with, with, with talking through staff and everything, so.
Absolutely. And Holly, Holly threatened me anyway.
All right, and the parks manager hire has been withdrawn at this point, so.
Sorry, there.
We won't be doing that.
Back to drawing board.
Okay.
Me, me and you will talk offline.
Looks like we get to drive the Gatorade.
That's what I'm wondering, me and you are gonna be doing another 5K.
We have the town-county agreement approval for the mayor's signature. This is our, basically, with any changes other than probably the dollars from last year.
That's it.
It's our standard town-county agreement, which we've been signing for as long as I can remember, which is maybe is a little shift in the dollars.
Is that, is that the tax equity that comes back from Carroll County that we're talking about, the agreement?
Yeah, that's one of the provisions, yes, and there are other provisions as well, but yes.
And we would like to revisit that with the increase in our police force and some of the services we're providing, just to make sure our citizens are getting all the equity they deserve.
And then the tax equity is, it's, it's a system that the, the counties use to return money to, to Mount Airy for services that we provide that are taken out of our property taxes at the county level. We have our own police force, so we get X number of dollars back for that. And we, Frederick County and Carroll County both do tax equity back to us. And it's just money we get. How, how much does this number vary from year to year? 207,000 in here. That's, that's actually a pretty good one for Carroll County.
Well, Carroll's actually, and I don't, I can't give you an answer to the variation, I don't think it varies much, and I know, but.
It's, it's kind of steadily going up.
Frederick is about 800,000, and they're, they're very high, with Charlene. But Frederick County is very high because Carroll County provides a library, a fire department contribution, some things that Frederick County does not.
And they do make, I think they make payments out of our tax equity to the fire department.
And actually, Frederick County has gone up significantly, I believe, under the new administration.
All right, and is this money divided between police and fire, or? No, no, it comes, I think it comes right back to our general fund, doesn't it?
General fund?
Yeah, knowing that we actually do spend money on police and fire, but it comes into our general fund.
But those specifics, and let's make sure you follow up with Charlene.
Yep.
That would give you clearance. That's, no, it's, it's fine, but the councilman's asking good questions, and I don't want to give him.
Well, and what, what Frederick County did recently that made us very happy was they were able to pass a county law that, that sets the, the, um, what do you call it? Sets the.
I was reading the chief's tax.
Percentage? Well, it doesn't set the percentage, but it sets, it sets the method for.
There's a formula.
It does, it, it sets the formula in the town, or in the county code, so that we get it back every year.
And whoever can figure out that formula, please let me know.
We're using the same formula, and, and Frederick County's always been more than generous with this tax equity.
All right.
Carroll County is equally as generous with the contributions in kind.
Okay, so I think we've, we've, I've lost track. Have we voted to approve that? I lost track, but I think.
I don't think we ever have a motion.
I, I thought, okay. All right, well, I will move it in case we didn't.
We did not.
Okay, I, I'll also move it, any seconds? Jason? Any more discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right. Okay, we have road closing requests for Celebrate Mount Airy. This is coming up on August 25th from 5:00 to 9:00. Basically, the historic district want to close the roads from Prospect to Paradise. They filed the applications with State Highway and everything else.
I would make that motion, Peter.
All right, I will. Alright, I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that was, that's, that's a great event.
Yeah, that was, I think last year was the first year, and it was just a lot of fun.
Next up is, is an item I put on the agenda.
Peter, this might be a good time to throw in, that the Historical Society is having their open.
Yes, before the.
Grand opening at the museum, and now we don't have to cover that in my reports.
Okay, one down.
It'd be a great night.
Um, I put this on here, Tom, I, I wanted to have the council maybe just do a little discussion on this, this sign problem. The problem we've had, and it showed up in, in this election particularly, is we had candidates putting signs on public property and public right-of-way, and, um, I know back when my, my week or so was acting mayor, I got some complaints about them, and I went to staff and said, what do we do to get those removed from public property? And we have to track down these people, as our, at least, we took in our code reads, and we have to track these people down, some of whom we have not been able to get in touch with, before we can remove their signs. And so it seems to me that there's a real problem there. I think the signed ordinance was written originally with the thought process that it was covering in-town candidates who had come and registered to put up their signs. Therefore, we knew where those people were, and when they put a sign in the wrong place, we knew how to contact them and we could come tell them. The ones we've had a lot of are this gentleman, Paul U-Tam.
He's got his name flipped.
He's good, yeah.
I watch him post signs.
Yeah, or U-Tam Paul, right, as they're flipped. They're all over the place, and they're on all the corners, and they're all on public property, and, and he, apparently, I guess he didn't win the election, so we don't know how to get a hold of him, and we can't, under our code, just pull the signs. We've tried. So, my thought process is, if the council is in agreement, we need to redo this ordinance so we can just get rid of signs that are on public property. And, and am I correct in my, and staff's look at how the ordinance reads?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't notify. We can't find them.
Here's the, the, the thing that I see in this ordinance that, frankly, is kinda strange, and that is, what this ordinance says, even though it's on our property, is we cannot remove the sign until we've provided the notice. I believe S.H.A. does it completely the opposite. They remove, they keep, they provide the notice, if you don't come pick your sign up by X date.
Garbage.
It's gone.
Yeah.
And so our ordinance does not match that. And so if I were to suggest something, I, I, I think I would allow you to remove it, keep it, for a period of time, in some designated location, you know, do the best notice you can. And, and if, you know, it's not picked up, then, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think the section of, of the code is, or charter, is under review right now by planning because of the temporary sign issues.
Right.
So it would be easy enough in, in this time to add that in there. Hopefully, this whole section's gonna come before the council, before too long.
Is that in eleven pages, or are we actually trying to expedite?
My issue is, I, I didn't, I, I don't know that we want, we've got another election coming up, real soon. And I, I thought maybe we should have Tom just redraft this section, so we can just pull these signs. I mean, they're still out there, they're getting blown around, I still see them. We had one guy who actually took screws and screwed them to the back of a town's sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so they couldn't be easily, Monica went out, she came back, she said, yeah, I found that sign, it's screwed, I gotta go get scissors, I'm gonna. So, you know, we need to be able to just pull these signs off of town property.
Yeah.
And I, and S.H.A. does it backwards. Like I said, I think when this ordinance was written, it was assuming that these were in-town candidates who had registered to put up signs, and we knew where they were. But that's not what's happening.
And remember, ninety-two dash one doesn't apply just to political signs, it's any sign.
Yeah, right.
Any new ordinance really ought to apply to any sign. We really should not do something different for political speech than we do for commercial speech, because that runs right into the fairly recent Supreme Court case that says you can't do that. That's content-based.
Right, yes.
And that's kind of what brought a halt to this review of the sign ordinance, if you remember.
It is, yeah.
We, we were right at that point where we're, we're not real sure where we stand on something.
Right, and a lot of the sign ordinances with all the different types and styles of signs, I'm just dealing with a very simple portion I think we can do fairly quickly, which, as Tom says, is the way it's done elsewhere.
Okay.
When it's on town property, we just remove it.
Well, I mean, it, it is tricky, because, I mean, you don't wanna walk in front of a business and grab their, their illegal sign, take it with ya, back, you know, and then send out the notice on it. But, but, I mean, our code is broken down, where you have a very specific paragraph about political signs, so.
Well, but that's in the zoning ordinance that defines what, what signs are, aren't allowed on private property. That is a difference, different than this ordinance, which deals with really the process by which you remove any sign that you find to be illegal and meaning without authorization on town property. There's also another section that deals with unauthorized signs on private property, but that's a separate issue, and on that one, I probably would not march on people's property and start plucking signs.
Sure.
But what we're talking about is changing this Section ninety-two dash one, which is the removal of signs from town property. You oughta be able to do that quite readily.
Yeah, as it stands now, I could print up a bunch of signs with who knows whose name on it. I could cover one of our parks with them, completely. And, and if they don't, they don't know how to contact the guy or get the guy, I could build a billboard in one of our parks, actually.
Easy, Peter, you give everybody ideas.
But what I'm saying is, and we can't, we can't remove it, if we can't track down the person who put it up. And that's kinda what happened in the last election. Fortunately, they were just regular political signs, but you're right. If, I mean, I'm thinking, if somebody were to decide to put up a banner as you come into town, we can't take it down.
Yeah, I mean, I would be in agreement.
Great, people have thirty days now before this gets passed.
Well, that's why I wanna get fixed.
Yeah, I would be in agreement with modifying.
Yeah, I just wanna have, I just wanna find, I, my thought process was, I wanna have Tom come back to us with an ordinance just to fix this section, so that we can remove signs right away on town property.
Okay.
But just, just understand, it's gonna, it's, it's in the process of being reworked now, I mean, we're just.
But that's been, that's been for years now.
I understand.
Also, and on the tail end of that, you're also, it's gonna be in my mayor's report, we're also working on a temporary
Right.
signage issue that we're also trying to fast-track.
But this, this is a quick fix for a problem we had this election with multiple candidates.
Right, and you're, you're talking to counties and all that kinda stuff, not candidates here in town.
Yeah, the, no, yeah, I, I mean, these were people running for congress and all kinds of things.
I feel much better, Peter, I'm good.
Well, we are a small town, I mean, we know, we certainly know our local candidates.
Right, and that's why I think, and I think that's what the ordinance was written about.
Right.
There was assumption that you know the local people, they've registered. I just wanted to see if, get a feel for the council, if we could tell Tom, hey, come back to us with something to fix this. Is that kinda?
Tom, fix this.
Tom, fix this, okay. That's good.
I'm good with that.
We can move on.
Are you gonna pay him?
Soon as, soon as the council authorizes.
Poor Colleen's been trying to get a hold of these people with these dead websites and these, and these no longer working addresses, and we can move the signs. Alright, up next, mayor's report.
Okay, let me roll through this as quick as I can. Usually don't address too many comments. As far as notices to Bee Genie, I actually did reach out to Bee Genie. There was a lack of notices, just to let you know, and she was supposed to take care of that. I originally thought it was a staff issue, but I talked to Megan Eves, and she was gonna find out why notices. I received a couple of the phone calls. Speed enforcement, we actually have a speed monitor set up. I don't know the exact location, but I asked staff to set that up. Sometimes it's perception, sometimes it's not, but we always start with a process through streets.
You mean the flasher, the flash is what the speed is when you go by?
Speed is, and actually, it gives us a recording of the speed times, when the speeding is happening. So we always deal in data on that. Let me see. Downtown master plan, we're gonna have another workshop coming up in September, and we expect to have that wrapped up by October. We did, earlier in the month, open up the Flatiron Building for people just to walk in and see the public building and to see what it's all about and what the potential of it could be. Just to let the town council know, we are gonna be looking at a new town survey. We actually should do a town survey before every master plan. We got a little off-track back in two thousand and seven. Actually, I chaired the Growth and Development Task Force at Fall, this is the new survey back then. But we're gonna have a new town survey coming out, and you'll be seeing some traction on that very soon. I'm gonna jump with Larry real quickly. Camp Night, I think it was announced wrong. Larry's gonna hit it, I'm gonna hit it, Bob's gonna hit it, probably everybody's gonna hit it, if that's right. It was announced wrong in the paper.
August eleventh.
And it's only because I received at least two emails about it being misprinted. I reached out to the paper, told them about that. Also, I was away this weekend, I just got emails late, and on my mayor's email chain, it appears that four towns did receive public open space, and those towns were Hamstead, Manchester, Mount Airy, and Sykesville. Our cut, Larry, and I'm sure this is something we're gonna go back with, Melissa, and Parks, and Larry. We're looking at about eighty-five thousand dollars public open space. It's our turn, yes, we, that's right. And there was a grant, but there's some finalized issues that we need to go through. It's looking good, and I just got that. Thank you, Mayor Nevin, from Hamstead for sending that out. As we said, we have Celebrate Mount Airy coming up. We do have the ribbon cutting on the four P.M. And Historical Society has worked very hard to get this building open. It's not gonna be fully. It's gonna be a work in progress, but I think it's gonna be enough, and I think Doc O'Brien's been working. We've got a lot of dedicated people. Doc, you're waving your hand. Yes, 'cause you, I think the council president will allow you to speak, 'cause you're involved in that issue.
I think he's, Doc, you just waving 'cause you're there, or 'cause you wanna address the issue? Waving 'cause he's there. And it looks gorgeous. Doc took me in a couple, a little while ago to see it.
Yeah, I know everybody's been working in Historical Society, it's really, it's some dedicated people that go over there and just volunteer their time to preserve our rich history. So we do ribbon cutting at four P.M. Then you have Celebrate Mount Airy at five. We have the thank you and a hope to the community. Wayne Evans has really been out there doing a lot of work on it. We wanna thank you, Wayne, for that as well. Let me see, on September first, Larry's gonna touch on that. It's like it's gonna be a five K, we're gonna have to work. I want to, let me see, yes, speed up. We are gonna be fast-tracking, 'cause the, the sign ordinance has been out there for a long time. Things just coming up as priority, we just had another issue come up. We are gonna help, try to help fast-track. I'm gonna think Monica, we've been dealing with the local business that is dealing with some banners, and we wanna try to help them as much as we can. I know Larry has been involved in that somewhat as well. And we're gonna try to just speed up this portion. And maybe sometimes it's easier to take things in bite-sized pieces and get through, 'cause the sign ordinance is pretty thick, so we are gonna be speeding that up. I think that's gonna complete my mayor's reports. I do wanna give a nice shout-out to Caitlin Khan, a ten-year-old girl from Nottingham that just underwent a, she got a pacemaker put in, and it was successful. Sweet young lady, so congratulations, Turner family. I believe everything went well.
Very well.
Very scary experience for such a little girl, so, and she received a lot of outreach from the chief and the fire department. This is something we all put together at the last minute, really. I was just gonna go out and meet her, but then things just evolved, and boom, it just happened like that. So hi Caitlin Khan, we hope everything is going well. I do have some commission reappointments and recommended. Did I mention that we had a speed monitor sign?
Yes.
Out, okay, just wanna make sure we'll get that data. Commission reappointments, we have a whole list of them. We have, uh, and again, thank you to all these volunteers that offer to serve time and time again. It keeps our tax base low, as we say, even with the fireworks program. That's, although the town does step up, and has been stepping up more and more, this is how we keep our taxes, so all these great volunteers. So, I would like to get these people back on these commissions. Dick Hager on Beautification Commission, Keith Gailey on Board of Appeals, Andrew Heck on Board of Recreation and Parks, Scott Ryland, Board of Recreation and Parks, and not only, then, Richard Swanson, who serves on Dick, who serves on every commission in the town. No, actually, I think there's a couple he doesn't, but on water and sewer, I guess it's time. How many times have you, how many, how long have you been there, Dick?
Water and sewer?
Yeah.
Since its inception?
Back when we used to hand draw from a well, right? From, since, are you serious? Since the seventies? He says twelve years. Twelve years?
Twelve years.
Okay, that just seems so long, okay. So I move those recommendations to the council.
I will second those recommendations. Do I see this? I mean, I, I, well, I will, I'll move it technically, I have to move it, so.
And I'll second.
Is that Bob? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, is that it?
That's it. I'll have a formal written report ready by the end of the week that we'll be discussing.
Beautification, Parks and Rec, Larry?
Alright, Beautification, we've had a couple members who did not renew their terms on beautification, so they are looking for new members on the Beautification Commission. They've done a lot of work as you're driving around town and look at the park entrances and the park signs between Tina Swanson, Beverly, and the rest of them, and they're always out there making those signs beautiful. Certainly, if you drive down Prospect Road and look at East West Park, it's a great example of the work that they do, and Wildwood, all of them. Let's see, at their last meeting, they ordered some benches and trash cans to go into various parks. They had their elections, and Tina Swanson will continue as the chairman, and their next meeting is August twenty-first at seven P.M. On the Parks and Rec side, the Ambassador's Challenge, I was out of town. You, I think you were there, Pat? Did that go pretty good?
I did, I did. It was me and Phil, and I know you were involved in a lot of that coordination, so thank you for weeks leading up to it without a Parks Manager, it's so valuable. Me and Larry and Mike, we were running around. It seemed like it was all new this time, 'cause we had the pad this time set up, but it all worked out well, Larry, and I, I know you intended to work it.
I wanted to.
I know. We, we wanted you to.
Sometimes I go to trouble. The next five K is Galatians six-two, that'll be on September first. That'll be at Watkins Park and Mount Airy Baptist Church is ending that one up. The first-ever Mount Airy Olympics will be on August, they have a kickoff on August ninth and tenth. It's being set up by a young man named David Rosequest, and they're gonna, we're having two movies this weekend. On Friday, it's gonna be Miracle, and that'll start at sunset, which is around eight-thirty. That'll kick off his Olympics setup. And if you're interested in the Olympics, it's mount, uh, W-W-W, mountairylempics.wixsite.com, and that'll get you to where you can sign up. And he's, it's a youth-friendly event that he's trying to get underway. The movie on Saturday is going to be Sing, and that's gonna be at the Camp Night. So Camp Night is August eleventh. We're gonna have Slim Harrison back after missing last year with Slim. Slim does a family-friendly, kind of a folky type of music that the kids all join in the band. So all the kids are invited to come up and bang drums, and he's got a wash tub up there, and he's got some washboards, spoons, of course, and they just make noise, and he sings really well over them. So, so, but it is a lot of fun. Burgers and hot dogs out there. The movie will be Sing, that'll start at nightfall, and everybody is invited to bring a tent and spend the night in Watkins Park. It's a great way to introduce families to camping. Kids who you're not sure if they're gonna do okay in the woods, you take them out there, spend the night. If they go crazy at two o'clock in the morning, you can drive home, come back in the morning and pick up your tent. Usually rains, regrettably, but the rain makes it more fun. So I always bring two tents. I keep one in my trunk. And then when mine floods out, I break out the other one. So, anyway, that's, that's my trick of getting through it. Celebrate Mount Airy, of course, August twenty-fifth, and let me move on. The basketball court construction, I guess they're waiting for the rain to stop, so they can go in there and actually start. So Barney and I met with the contractor out there. Everything's set to go, they just gotta be able to get out there and, and start building. So, so we're, we're waiting for that to kick off. So, the skate park. The Parks Board is still evaluating the usage of the footprint of the skate park as if we're gonna rebuild it or what we're gonna do in that area, and it's very much up to the Parks Board to continue meeting and discussing what's gonna go on with that footprint. But we are trying to make it safe for usage during any of these events, like the five Ks, or, or when we have the Making Strides event, things like that. So, so for temporary usage, we're trying to make it very usable. Our next meeting for Parks and Rec is August sixteenth at seven P.M., and that's my report.
Thanks, Larry. EDC and Planning, Bob?
Okay, Planning Commission. We don't usually talk about the farmers' market, the Planning Commission, but I want you to know that it's every Wednesday from three till seven, and it runs through the end of September, I believe. We're also working on some rules of procedure. It's, it's procedure that we already do, but we don't, we don't have anything written. So these are, these are, the Planning, Planning Commission is developing their own rules of procedure, how they're gonna handle things. You know, as, they, 'cause we have, we have nothing written, and they're actually required by the state of Maryland to get some rules of procedure underway.
For farmers' market?
No, 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 no. That's the farmers', I was just blasting the farmers' market. Pam Reed has been elected as the MAMSA President, that's a. Pam Reed has been elected as the MAMSA president at the Mount Airy Main Street Association. The Greater Mount, Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce and EDC and MAMSA are all working together on a bi-local program. Everything seems to be going real well. Pam's not here anymore. Everything seems to be going very well. Downtown master plan. The 24th, the 25th, 26th, and 27th of September are the, the dates for the charrettes that are going to happen. You're going to hear more about it. We just got this information today. EDC.
Emphasize that. There's a lot hinging on the downtown master plan study. It's closure of Park Avenue, parking downtown, Center Street going through.
All the things that we were trying to do at one time, flat out building, Center Street.
Park Avenue.
Park Avenue.
Now, what are the dates, what are the dates we just got, Bob?
The dates are the...
Of September?
Yes.
It's very important. A lot of people will get on Facebook, they get on social media. Come on out and get involved in the process.
This is your, this is your last opportunity. We had a very, very good turnout at the public hearing on the 19th of June. These people really want you to come out. Now, charrette is a different way of involving you as the citizens in this, in this discussion. I'm not real sure how it's going to happen, but it's, it's not only going to be very productive, but a lot of fun too.
Yeah, we broke down into individual groups and it was, I felt it was handled very well. Monica, I want to thank you for all your hard work on that. Monica took the lead on that project.
People and we, we, there were over a hundred there.
Yeah, it was, it was great, Monica. I'm really looking forward. Nothing's more important than our downtown. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, that's, that's okay because it's, you know, it's getting the public involved. And like I said, these charrettes are probably going to be the last opportunity for the public to be involved. So really plan your time if you can't get down there for a little bit. And they're going to be running all day long on all four of those days, you know, early in the morning till late in the evening. And they're, they're setting up a schedule now of what they're going to be doing, what they're going to be working on because this is not like any meeting you've ever been to in your life. Please go down and enjoy it.
So details will be posted on the website, because it sounds a bit...
Yeah, those consultants are going to get back to me with a more detailed daily schedule of what they're going to be doing for each of those four days.
Good.
Okay, and the next, the next planning commission meeting is on the 27th of this month. EDC, I tell you about the farmers market. We've got this great farmers market down here every, every Wednesday from 3:00 to 7:00. And the downtown master plan is proceeding on, so make sure you get involved in those charrettes. EDC visited Sykesville last Friday night. We, there was, I think, 10 or 12 of us that went from EDC and MAMSA and we, some Greater Mount Airy Chamber of Commerce. We went, we met with their Main Street manager because they're a Main Street program, just like we are. We went, we had a meeting with them for about 45 minutes, you know, discussing the pitfalls, the good things, the bad things. And we had an absolutely wonderful time. We walked into, this, this guy had just rented a building and had plywood on the floor, pulled plywood up and it was the most beautiful hardwood floors you could ever believe in your life. Pulled this stucco stuff down off the, off the walls and he has tongue-in-groove paneling that's, is just, you know, this stuff is hundreds of years old. So he's, we, we were in there when it started raining. And it rained. And everybody ran into the restaurants and the bars. And so our 7:00 reservation for there got pushed back to about 9:00 o'clock. But it was great because one of the ladies that we had been talking to out there was the owner of E.W. Beck's Restaurant. And she was just, she knew all of us at that point. She kept coming by and apologizing. I said, hey, you know, what can you do? We're, just like everybody else, we're wet. But we, we had a great time. We have a lot to talk about at our meetings. The ambassadors challenge, it was well-attended. It was, it was a fun event. This is the second year I've, I've attended this. And big, I think it was a big learning curve for me on, you know, Parkinson's and, and some of the things that you can do to try to help. National Night Out is Tuesday, is tomorrow. Don't forget that. That's a, that's just a great way to become entrenched with your, with your police department. They're going to, you know, do a lot of community reach or community reach out. What do we call it? And the next EDC meeting's on the 22nd of August. And that is my report.
Thanks, Bob. Is it, is it okay if I ask a question about the, the rules? Because I know I can't do it in an email and send out to everyone. So in a public meeting, are these rules for the planning commission required in writing?
There, yes, there is a statute, Maryland statute, that says that the planning commission shall adopt rules.
Okay, and right now we don't have any. Is that a true statement?
Not that I understand.
We, we have, we have some, you know, we, we have some that the mayor and the town council, you know, they, they basically...
In, in writing?
They may be understandings instead of just rules.
Practices, probably.
Well, yeah, and it's just, it's common, yeah, it's common practices. How do you, how do you handle your, your alternate there, you know?
Okay.
You know, or deciding that you have an alternate, deciding that you have eight, eight members and, and, you know, it's, they're, they're very simple things.
The code specifies the commission makeup, if that's what you're talking about.
Right, yeah.
Right, and the rules really shouldn't do that. The rules are really about the procedure. How does, how does one before a planning commission, you know, get things done? What, you know, I, Peter would know this. In court, we have a whole set of rules of civil procedure. They tell you what you can file, when you have to file it, by how things proceed.
Yes.
They don't deal with substance. And that's really what these rules are contemplating.
So my question is, and I've been to numerous planning meetings and you guys have been working hard on, on coming up with this, and eventually you're going to create a, a product.
Right.
Okay, does that product come before the council table to be voted on?
I would say no.
No. I would, yes, I would, I would say no unless there were some issues that somebody wanted to bring before. Because there are some issues that affect town councilmen. And it's going to affect everybody that works as a, as liaison to the planning commission from now on. So, you know, there's, there's things that we, we will be, we'll be bringing to the council.
I'm surprised you can't just copy someone else's, Roxanne's podium, sorry. I'm surprised that, you know, we can't just take some other towns that's worked well.
Well, and we, and I think that's...
Like four different ones there, blending.
Yeah.
Roxanne?
We have, we've, we went on, onto the, I'm on the planning commission, but I'm also on the board of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. So we've taken their rules that are on their website as a, as an example, as a model. And also at the convention in October, we are going to be, one of the breakout sessions is going to be talking about ex parte communication, which is a little sticky thing that planning,
My disagree.
Planning commissions have to deal with. But as far as the rules or what we determine coming to the council to be voted on, they don't have to be.
Okay, so is it...
Because we're, planning commission is a...
Independent.
Is independent and is organized by the state. I mean, it's a state thing.
And I'm perfectly fine with that. Is it considered an executive document? I mean, who signs this thing and makes it something they have to, where's the teeth in this document?
Well, it's...
It's policy from the, from...
The approval is, is that if it's approved by the planning commission, it becomes the planning commission's rules. And the enforcement of those rules have to be done mostly by the chair, but by the planning commission in general.
Okay, all right.
And is it as long as it's not in conflict with our charter, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, it can't conflict with the charter, can't conflict with ordinance.
And see, that's where, that's where I think we have an issue.
That's where I think we need to review it. That Tom, we say we, Tom.
Well, yeah, I think Tom is, has been reviewing what we've been doing. So, yeah, he's reviewing it.
Let's, let's move on.
Thank you.
Sanitation, recycling, sustainable, what, Mount Airy Sustainable Commission?
Sounds good.
Okay.
We, uh...
Councilman Poirier.
We recently had our shredding and battery event at Watkins Park. And those results, we have 12,255 tons of paper and 859 pounds of batteries for that event. J&amp;J gave us, gave the commission a rebid contract ahead of time for us to take a look at as their current contract ends this coming fiscal year. The commission is also investigating totes for regular trash. We're looking at cons versus pros, what it would, the cost would be to the town. And also looking at if it would be suitable, a suitable option for its residents. Please make sure that you download or take a look at My Waste app or Recycle Coach. This provides recycle dates, trash dates, yard waste, as well as recyclable items. As things begin to change, we're being told about certain items that will no longer be recyclable. So we'll have to make sure we stay up on those. Please remember to not blow grass and leaves into the street. And because of so many, I guess, complaints about the grass and the leaves, the commission will be taking a look at creating an ordinance to help make sure that residents follow those rules, as well as so that we will be able to assess fines to those residents that neglect that policy because of the extra effects that it does take upon our sewer system, as well as our water, and all the extra work that it takes for the maintenance gentleman. The town will be taking a look at, or excuse me, the commission will be taking a look at a very important page in the messenger, which is the town news, which happens to be the very back page of the messenger. We're actually going to investigate about looking at making it a center page rather than a back page. There's so many good items on that and it's so neglected that we're going to see about what the cost would be to move that page to the center rather than the back. We did not have a sustainable Mount Airy commission that will be coming this month, August 15th, 7:00 P.M. at Town Hall. And I would like to thank Century Ford for providing some vehicles for us in the parade.
Yeah, that's always great.
So thank you Century Ford for that.
Hey, I got a nice Mustang convertible to ride in.
It was Century Ford.
I just want to say one thing. That messenger is gratis. We don't pay one cent for that, that whole ad, that whole page. Just want to let you know.
We'll add a few dollars to make it center page.
Becky has done that for us...
That's so, okay.
Forever.
Yes.
Very kind.
And I think that should be noted.
That will be noted.
A lot of times we can't put our ads in Becky's paper because she comes out every other week and it doesn't work because I usually have to do consecutive ads.
Okay.
But Becky has done that on her own for a long, long time.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I know you didn't know.
No, I, we didn't know because we thought we were getting charged for the back page.
All you newbies.
In defense of Councilman Poirier, I deal with this all the time. I'm just saying.
If he's a newbie, what am I?
I've been here 30 years.
Thank you for informing the newbie as I round out four years.
We're, we're all newbies compared to Debbie. She's been rounding.
Oh, God. She can call everybody a newbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, thank you for your passion, Councilman, newbie Poirier.
Okay, is that it, Jason? Okay, Streets and Roads, obviously we don't have a report from Scott as he's resigned. But that brings up just one thing. Mr. Mayor, and obviously it's your prerogative how you want to recommend rearranging the council. But if what you decide to do is appoint whoever wins the next election to that, you may want to bring it up at the September meeting so that we can get that commission slot filled right away, if that's what you want to do.
By the way, that's my intent. We're not, we're not shaking things up nine months before another election and shaking them up again. There's been enough shakeups in town.
Then we probably ought to put that on the next agenda just to fill whoever it's going to be.
However you like.
Another issue that's coming up is we have two rules that I'm going to suspend for the next election because this is the first time we ran an election where they weren't applicable. One is we will go ahead and start a meeting on time. I had set a policy that we weren't going to start meetings until 8:15 on election night because the polls didn't close till 8:00. And everybody who's running didn't get back here till 8:00. But nobody sitting at the tables on the, on the, on the, on the ballot.
Good.
So we don't need that.
Good.
The other thing is we can bring in the election results as soon as they're ready because once again, nobody sitting at the table is on the ballot.
Good point.
Do you have any idea when you want to do the swearing in of the new person?
No, gosh, you're putting me on the spot. By the way, by the council recommendations, the mayor recommends the council has to approve.
Right.
My recommendation would be to stay the same and then it's up to the council to confirm that.
We'll just have that on the agenda so we can fill that slot.
As far as swearing in, I'd usually coordinate that with Debbie who has been here for over 30 years. I just want to point that out.
Well, I got for the next 30 years, I hear that a lot.
Is that okay with you, newbie?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure of the date, but we have to swear him in right away. I mean, we have to get him in. It's, it's, it's not, it's a very quick...
Right, right. I was just thinking, we need, we need, you need to schedule that at some point.
Yeah, thank you.
But we will be starting at the regular time. For those who are used to starting a different time, and I guess Bruce has ducked out already, but he can bring in the, the results when he gets them, as opposed to waiting till the end of the meeting. And Debbie, we will have on the agenda next month to appoint that one commission to Streets and Roads, since that's the mayor's intent. All right. Next up is Water and Sewer, which is mine. We actually had a resignation today. I don't know if everybody's seen the email. We had one resignation from Water and Sewer, so we have an open slot. So we'll be looking for another Water and Sewer member. So send your stuff to the mayor if you want to be on Water and Sewer. A large portion of our discussion has been money that's going to be sunk into various stormwater management pond upgrades. And I see Dick heading this way. Here's Dick, the chair of Water and Sewer. I was just going to say, we've been covering stormwater management ponds and Dick's been on top of it and how the county and the federal government's making us waste money destroying lots of really good ponds and rebuilding them in ways that I think are not nearly as efficient.
That is a commentary by Councilman Peter Hell. In no way reflects on our own great governor of this state.
I went out with the engineers. I looked at this pond. I said, this thing is perfect. I mean, it's working exactly the way it's supposed to be where it's coming out. There's fish in the water. I climbed down the hill and looked at the fish. And I go, oh no, we're going to dig it up. We're going to put in concrete. We're going, I'm like, this is, why? Okay. And it's going to cost millions of dollars.
Newbie.
More towards natural.
No, no, they're taking, they're taking what to me is a beautiful stormwater management pond. I mean, it's got cattails growing in, it's filtering the water like it's supposed to be. It had like three overflows. I mean, this thing was, I couldn't overbuild this thing. And they're going to tear it up. Dick, go ahead.
We've asked Peter to please preview his comments with the Water and Sewer Commission. I just, I wanted to mention about grass in...
That actually stuck. Go ahead.
And when you're talking about doing code, I would suggest that you run that by Water and Sewer. We have a similar interest in that. And matter of fact...
Sounds good.
The Mount Airy tracks, we did mention that in the last one. So coordination, so we make sure that we have the process.
We'll get a draft and we'll send it to you guys as well.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Well, as far as, you know, the money, as you're aware, probably Carroll County, we have an agreement with them. So we simply fund them a fixed amount every year out of the budget, which is actually a reduction of the town-county agreement funding. And whatever projects cost within the Carroll County side of town, they pay 100% of that. On the Frederick County side, where there is no agreement, we pay 100% of the costs. That's where the big bucks come in. And we were talking about the last meeting that we have two projects that the, the dam over in Twin Ridge, the repair effort in a stormwater management pond. And you're talking in the neighborhood about $2 million, we think. So...
Dick, not to interrupt you, but the work that we do in Carroll County, is it not credited to the Carroll County, the work we do on the Carroll County side, is it not credited to the Frederick County side?
It is not.
No.
We have a separate requirement for Frederick County side and the Carroll County side. So we're, we're on our own there. Fortunately, Carroll County is very good about helping us with engineering coordination, working on grants and things like that. So they're, they give us a lot of free help for the Frederick County side.
Yeah, they're helping us on Frederick County.
So they help us on Frederick.
Not with dollars, but with...
Not with dollars, with in-kind. But the cost of engineering, the cost of construction and, and all of that where the big bucks are, that's totally on us. Frederick County does not participate with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Another thing we're working on is a, a thing to go on the town website that discusses what to do as far as draining your pool water is concerned. There is an issue with, you know, if you just dump your pool water and it runs down into our stormwater management ponds with the corn and other chemicals, you can throw things off. So we're just going to put kind of a thing on there to kind of let people know, hey, if you're draining your pool, town staff can point them to this little thing that says, here's the things you should be doing. So that's going to be going on there. the things you should be doing. So that's going to be going on there. As I mentioned before, we have, we have an opening, and our next meeting will be at 9:05. That's September 5th. That's 7:00 in this room, and we will move on to Town Administrator, Monica.
Okay, our auditors are...
Yep.
September 5th?
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
Oh.
First Wednesday of the month.
You're talking, you're talking water. I thought you were talking town council.
No, Water and Sewer, September 5th. We already moved town council meeting. Monica, go ahead.
Our auditors are going to be here on the 20th of August to do their in-house audit like they do every year, and we have a bunch of people that are involved in that process to get information ready for them. Barney and Holly and a couple other people are going to be interviewing for Rachel's job. Rachel leaves this Friday, so please, if you want to say goodbye to her, Friday is her last day, and we're going to try to throw a little lunch party or something like that. She's done a great job while she's here, and we're really going to miss her a lot. Downtown Master Plan, as I mentioned, we're going to have a more detailed schedule of the days of what activities are going to be happening which days. And it is an, it is an open house type of forum, so you can go in and out and watch the designers work in real time. We'll have an onsite illustrator that will be putting drawings up on the walls and stuff like that. So it's just really going to be a fun process.
Totally different, so totally different.
Yeah, totally different. And we've been getting a lot of calls about critters around our storm ponds, foxes, groundhogs, and it's, so I called Mid-Atlantic Wildlife Control today and talked to them for a little bit, and that, you know, their hole, their foxholes and their groundhog holes are flooded with water, and so that's why they're up and about. And so we've been getting a lot of people freaking out about seeing a lot of groundhogs and foxes. So they decided to kind of let it be, and once the water recedes, they'll go back to their normal routine, but...
Yeah, when you, when you come out and you want to live in a rural area, you get foxes and groundhogs and stuff. That's part of, part of what happens.
Yeah, we've had so much rain that we can't go back to where they normally go, and so they're just more visible right now.
Yeah, makes sense.
You don't get that in New York City.
Right, right.
That's it.
All right, thanks, Monica. Tom?
You can't get through salsa.
I've covered most of what I would report. The main thing that I worked on this past month was the Planning Commission rules.
Okay. Okay, do we need a closed meeting for either real property rails to trails or, well, I guess we don't, we're not discussing either the in-person. So nothing on planning of rails to trails?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Then what, then Tom, do we adjourn the council meeting and then reopen the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
Call it by case number.
I will then move that we adjourn the council meeting.
We always ask to pay the bills. Did we?
No, I removed that from the agenda.
Okay.
But we're coming back into open session?
Uh, we will have to, to vote, yeah, it's a hearing. So we will have to come into a open session again when we're done.
Well, here's what I, yes, true. Here's what I recommend in terms of process. We do the hearing. At the end of the hearing, you all vote whatever, you know, to approve or to not approve, as the case may be the application. At that point in time, I would introduce the ordinance. The next time in September, you will have before you a set of findings and decisions written, which are required, as well as the ordinance if you're going to approve.
Well, let me ask you this. Can, to avoid coming back and all those complexities, can we just introduce the ordinance now, and if we disapprove, it's just not on the agenda?
Sure, right.
Okay, all right. I will, I will move that we, I will move, yeah, I'm looking for, I will introduce, yes. I will introduce ordinance 2018-10 for zoning map amendment to 40-40 Twin Ridge Road. Do I have Twin, Twin Arch, sorry, Twin Arch Road. Got a second from Bob? Okay, that's been moved in. So if we issue an opinion approving it, then that will be on the agenda. If we issue an opinion not approving it, it will not be on the agenda.
So we have not closed the town council meeting?
No, I'm, I'm moving that we, we have not voted on adjournment yet. I move we adjourn, and I think you seconded, Bob? Did you second? All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Okay, I will now open the public hearing on...
Is there any way we can take like two minutes?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Five, five-minute break, and then we open the public hearing.
Why, if you ask for two.